To the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, February 12th, 2024. Let's have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start with public participation, I just wanted to give a notice of executive session. We did have a virtual executive session on 2-9 Friday afternoon, and we had an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss legal issues and personnel issues. Before we go with public participation, I do want to make a quick announcement on the -- and this came out by email earlier in the day. Sorry, we couldn't -- done it earlier. We have two ill commissioners tonight, and we are actually going to put to the 226-24 agenda items D, E, and F on the business agenda, which is the 60 West Conditional Use Decision, authorization to draft some -- a new ordinance for the zoning ordinance of Radnor Township related to special use in the Wayne Overlay District, and the discussion and direction on outdoor dining. They will all appear on the next agenda on 226. All right, public participation. Anybody want to speak? You have five minutes as a Radnor resident to speak on any issue you would like, or you can wait. If it's an agenda item, you can wait until then.
Good evening. My name's Burke Fitzpatrick. I live at 402 Locust Road in Wayne, and I just want to make a comment on the proposed ordinance about the dogs. I don't have any issues with a, I guess you would call it a time period or frame. I do have an issue that on Saturday it goes to dusk. There's a lot of people on the weekends that would like to walk their dogs late -- later, maybe 5:00, 6:00, maybe 7:00. It gets light, it stays light until 9:00, and there are some dog owners that don't get up early in the morning like I do. And again, I have no problem with limitations, but I think that's awful, restrictive, and unfair to the majority of the people that use the trail, which are the dog walkers. And that's my first comment. My second comment is, I probably went to five or six of the committee hearings, listened to a lot, heard a lot from other people, and they based a lot of this quote-unquote "on data" and reports of quote-unquote "incidents." They never presented any data. They always told us that if we wanted data, that we would have to file a Freedom of Information request. I think that's unfair because they're the ones that are making the changes. If they have data and they're going to use the data to make the change, they should at least present the data to the people that they're going to make the changes for or against. As far as incidents, I've been walking there with my dogs for nine years. I may have seen two incidents in my entire time there. Now, I only go specific times. I'm not there all the time. I will say that the dog owners there, 99% of them, are able to police themselves. Who's going to police this? You're going to write a ticket because somebody made a phone call? I made a phone call one time to the township to find out, what do you determine an incident? A phone call. Did you investigate it? No, it was a phone call. Somebody -- so there's quote-unquote "a piece of data" that we haven't been presented with, but it's an incident that is called an incident based on a phone call. You're going to write up a ticket because somebody made a phone call? Make them go to court? Make them pay fines just because they got a phone call? Again, no data was ever presented by the committee, and I won't belabor that point. The other point that I want to make is that that committee met many, many, many times. If it was a jury, it would have been hung, case closed. I mean, and I would come to the meetings, and I really appreciate the fact that you give the public the opportunity to speak first. They filibustered and wouldn't let us speak for hours. So this is a great opportunity now. I don't have any more to say, but that's what I have.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? We will have a, you know, we will be discussing the dog issue later. If you want to wait, I don't know if you're here for dogs, or actually, but you can speak now if you'd like to, or you can wait until we're actually into the meat of that later. It's up to you.
I'm having trouble with you in the hearing.
Ah, and I'm pretty loud. So you can either speak to the dog leash issue now as general public participation, or you can wait until we get to that section of the business agenda, whichever you prefer.
Oh, this is just general.
This is just general?
Yeah.
But you can, if you --
It's specific.
Right.
You can use your time now.
Okay, I'm ready to go.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we get the orientation right.
Yeah, call for Ian.
I can turn it around.
Thank you. There you go.
Perfect. Good. I can shift this. Good. Okay, I'm ready to go. This is going to be fast and furious. Good evening. I'm Bob Gilmore, 427 St. David's Road. I'm here to discuss the process and protocols associated with the Township's acceptance, review, evaluation, approval, in quotes, denial, and ultimate permitting of required documentation submitted by applicants for specific projects. In this case, 60 West Avenue, a conditional use application, and I've got several basic points. My primary issue were developed in the review of the documentation release for public evaluation and will not be focused on the merits or weaknesses of that project. However, I have found several significant issues that bear mention. Two, there is no intent to criticize the efforts of the design professionals involved. Three, when the page numbers are mentioned, it references document order in the second presentation released after the 10-18-23 meeting. Are we okay? You hear me okay? Initially, I'd like to do a brief show and tell because it's relevant. Thinking a picture is worth 1,000 words, I would like to display this noted 2436 sheet on which is drawn a noted rectangle 30 by 20, which is that inside line here. Both rectangles represent fairly common standard drawing sizes for architectural and engineering documents. Within the 2030 is yet another rectangle, which is an eight-and-a-half by 11 sheet, representing the document format which either the 3624 or 3020 drawings have been reduced. A nominal 67% reduction or reverse, an eight-and-a-half by 11 document would have to be expanded three times or 300% to get in the range of these larger sheets. Comparable to normal life experience, if you had an eight-and-a-half by 11 sheet reduced by 67%, it would be less than a three-by-five card. Actually, three and five-eighths by two and 1/16ths, which would be in the range of the larger sheets. I'm sorry, I got off track here. If a 12-point font were reduced by the same 67%, the result would be smaller than the smallest 6-point font on a typical keyboard, marginally readable. As background for the following comments, the importance of this exercise will become obvious. Page two. August 14, 2023, transmittal as part of the CU application reflected hand delivery of documents extracted from the transmittal is item one, 18 full-size copies of the conditional use plan set entitled 60 West Avenue Conditional Use Plan, prepared by Site Engineering Concepts LLC, each consisting of eight sheets. An inquiry about the possibility of reviewing said copies received the response, the township had received only eight-and-a-half by 11 documents. And my editorial comment here is, in the absence of an inventory of the reference drawings, I can find evidence of only seven drawings per set. Where, when, and how did this switch occur? In neither Article 23, which is Roman XXII conventional uses, nor Chapter 25, 255-19 sketch plan, did the township provide either specific direction or guidance relative to format or number of presented documents. Graphic documents have been degraded by reduction in the convenience of electronic transmission. The clarity required for thoughtful, thorough document examination relative to statute requirements has been significantly diminished. This is a disservice to all reviewing bodies, individuals, to the design professionals in creation of accurate documents, the applicant, question mark, and certainly to township residents who should legitimately assume that the documentation presented satisfies the intent and content of that required, not just for review and informed decision-making, but for an actual approval. It seems imperative --
Excuse me, sir, Mr. Gilmore. You're over five minutes. Could you wrap it up?
Okay, I want a sentence and then --
Are you a party to the 60 West case?
We'll read the second. Just finish one more sentence.
Fine.
"It seems impaired to insert a perceived schedule of events since December in search of the actual facts." Mr. McGilvery will read my second page.
I think the township should thank Mr. Gilmore for his thorough review of these documents. So per Section Article 23 --
Could you hold just for one minute? Is there a problem with a party giving public participation now?
It's general public comment, but just for both of you gentlemen, you're both parties to that conditional use application. You have both submitted this information to the board, right?
No, this is new information.
Okay, but you know that the hearing's over, right?
Well, the public should know about this information.
Okay, but --
That the information that's available to us is unreadable.
I think it's fair public comment, but five minutes, but you both submit a written documentation, which the board has, so if it's something different than that --
This is new.
Okay.
This is all new.
If you don't mind starting over, because I was so distracted with the question, I didn't hear -- I heard Mr. Gilmore, but I didn't hear when you started, and I'll start your time over.
And we need a name and an address, sir.
Angus Ronald McGilvery, 120 South Bellevue Avenue. Per Article 23, Section 28-138, approval review procedure, paragraphs A and C, either two, two courses may have been pursued. Both zoning officer and planning commissioners were provided with electronic images or actually received full-size images. Copies of the graphic documents for review. Comment and recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Are the recommendations written, and if so, why were they not introduced when presentations were submitted? A 60-day clock was running during the process before a Board of Commissioner meeting was to be held. In scenario one, the 67% reduction degraded and partially illegible documents certainly could not have been permitted as a complete and detailed review or evaluated by either the zoning officer or the planning commission. Thus, only a minimum or compromise recommendation is possible. In scenario two, with a full-size copies as much more detailed unrestricted evaluation would have been possible and thus more valuable in-depth recommendations could have been delivered. Without a record of these recommendations, it cannot be known what was used as the basis of the Board of Commissioners to move forward with the initial October 18, 2023 public hearing, other than the 60-day limitation. However, it is known via the October 19, 2023 release of the presentation, just what was said and what was included. What was most important, what was included? Ten graphic documents and two fiscal and traffic impact studies. What was not included? Specific impact studies required for Section 28-138G on commercial facilities, public utilities, police and fire protection, township open space and recreational facilities, and neighborhood characters. None of those impact statements have ever been presented to the public as part of the hearings, and they're listed in the conditional use as required. So that's why there's some confusion about what's happening here. So under Section 28-136, if a zoning officer finds an application deficient on any required components, zoning officer is required, the applicant, to meet the deficiency remedy in the form of resubmit application, or at a minimum include the documents as an addendum before scheduled hearing or risk application denial. And although not mentioned, it is assumed that the zoning officer should inform the Board of Commissioners of this situation. So what happened? There is no public evidence that any of this above actually happened, and other than a public hearing occurred as scheduled, without any acknowledgment of applicant deficiencies or status of expected receipt thereof. There is no obvious public evidence that there has been receipt of these statements to this day. The intent of the code probably could have been maintained by not holding the initial hearing on the grounds of these deficiencies and others that can be provided to pressure the applicant into compliance or risk denial upon compliance, hearing rescheduled. There might be an argument that the delay would injure the applicant. The response is that the applicant has caused a self-inflicted wound by filing, by not filing all the required information in a timely manner. There's so much more that needs to be addressed, but time restricts this. Mr. Gilmore has a long list of things that are missing in this application that is diligently documented, similar to the lack of the ability to share information with our public officials this whole process. So Mr. Gilmore and I, well, Mr. Gilmore is available to discuss all these issues and all issues uncovered relative to the flaws in this process mentioned above. It is a disservice to all interested parties and needs correction in many areas, including credibility. Thank you for your time, patience, and interest in this matter.
Any further public participation?
Good evening. Stephen Fletcher, 242 Highland Avenue. It seems confusion has been the theme of the first two speakers, and I will continue said theme. I'm here specifically because of the adjacent vacant property that now has a construction site on it at 203 Church Road, or as Radnor Township calls it, Church Street. I say Church Road because that's what the real property Delaware County records state. So my first request would be, I hope Radnor Township will please reconcile their records so that our streets and addresses reflect what the Delaware County website states and what other records have. Putting that aside, I'm here because Commissioner Abel is very aware of this situation, has been helping me throughout. This construction began in September of this past year, in 2023, on a 25-foot by 80-foot lot. It's a small, non-conforming lot that I came to understand had been given, or had had all the plans approved back in January of 2014 under a previous owner. Now, when my wife and I purchased the adjacent property in April of 2021, that small vacant adjacent property was listed for sale. I know this because we inquired, because we figured, why not? Let's see what they're asking. We never got a response, didn't find that too surprising, neither did our agent, because we assumed someone was building, and lo and behold, within a couple of weeks, Delaware County shows that the transfer of property that previously was $600 10 years before was $110,000 right after we had purchased our property. So we expected something to be built, and we expected someone would build a nice home there, small may it be, but within the constraints of Radnor Code. And when they broke ground, that seemed to be what they were doing. Very small lot with a builder who apparently has not built in Radnor before. That was clear and evident in the fact that they spray painted my fence when they laid equipment down, when they dug up the property nearby, when they destroyed part of the road with heavy equipment that wasn't rated for that. But I'll let the township deal with those aspects later. My issue was that I expected that Radnor Code enforcement would actually enforce height restrictions and basics that all of us who purchased here in Radnor had come to expect. So when I purchased my property, and for those of you who don't know where I'm speaking of, if you've gone to Odericio Park recently, if you look up towards the basketball courts to the left there, it's hard to miss. There's now what looks like a tower, because that's what it is. It's 17 feet wide, or that's what the plan says, by 42 feet wide. And when they built this flat roof initially, after three weeks of build, I thought, wow, okay, there it is. There's this tower here, great. But then at 6:00 a.m. on a Thursday, a double crew showed up. They removed that part of the roof. They built a stair tower, which is very visible, that allows for two doors, that brings the building height at that portion up to 44 feet. Now, while that was happening, I called the township going, whoa, what's happening? I want everyone to know, because I think something's off-kilter here. And I know this because I would take my drone every day for the fun of it and fly it up and take a shot of the construction site, because it was fascinating. And the beauty of a drone is it'll tell you the heights, and they're pretty accurate. And I was like, wow, man, they hit 35 feet on the nose. But then they pulled that off, finished the parapets on the side, and added a nine-foot stair tower. So I filed what I could and was told, that's perfectly fine. It's allowable. It's an exception. Now, it's not an exception if you were trying to do this in the Wayne Business Overlay, or really any commercial place, or any jurisdiction I've ever lived, because when you add something to the top of a building, your average person goes, hey, that's the top of the building now. In fact, I've yet to meet a single child at Odericio who has not said, oh, look, that's the top of the building, with one where she lovingly said, they put a shed on top of that building. And I agreed. Now, my issue with that being up there, being what it is, the reality of why it's there is really the bigger issue. It's because they're building a roof deck. Now, they're building a roof deck at 34 feet 8 inches, according to the plan. That has been accepted by Radnor Township. That was accepted in 2014, seven years before I purchased my property. And when the new purchaser, the new builder that's currently building, failed to fill out the paperwork, they came in front of the planning commission, said, oh, geez, I didn't know that that was what was happening. Okay, good, good first excuse, ignorance. That's it. Thank you. From that point forward, I won't bore you all with the details, because they're intense. But realistically, it made me question our enforcement mechanisms here, because I kept calling, going, what's happening with this? And then I called because they were working on Sundays, not one Sunday, not two Sunday, every Sunday. This was a secondary site. It was not their primary. That was clear. They come in the afternoons, they come on weekends. That's fine, but you can't work Sundays. I was told by the township, just report it, we'll cite them, they'll stop. Well, that was October, and as Commissioner Abel will be able to say, until this week, when I had to call Radnor Police a total of eight times over three days, two neighbors did as well, because this builder was once again working when they weren't supposed to, it finally has risen to enough of a level to get people's attention. So I won't bore you with more than that. But confusion is the word, because I was confused why I purchased a property and then someone could build one next door that just exceeds every basic concept of math. And maybe my Radnor High School education wasn't sufficient, but I thought it was pretty good. And when I measured the building that's 17-foot wide yesterday, and it was 17 feet and 6 inches, I thought, what are we enforcing? Because if this is what we're seeing as being built, very publicly for everyone to see who visits the park, and if this is approved by the township and there's no violations, even though any of us nearby have called any number of times and just seen violation after violation after violation, wanting just one thing to happen, well, they finally put a stop-work order up. Yes! Well, that happened on the 5th of January. They did more work from the 5th of January until last week than they did the previous two months. That's a problem. Confused me as a neighbor, what's a stop-work order? But didn't you could work?
Finish up, sir.
That's confusing. I thank you for your time. I just ask the board to please look into our enforcement mechanisms on residential properties, and whether roof decks and things being built at the maximum height and above is really the intent of the code. Perhaps that needs to be looked into. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public participation at this point? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any commissioner would like to pull?
C and D.
C and D? Commissioner Agnew?
Yeah, that was, um, right, C and D.
C and D?
Yeah.
Okay. Item C is Resolution 2024-26 engaging Robert E. Blue Consulting Engineers, PC, to provide expert engineering analysis specific to the Hamilton Conditional Use Application. Can I have a motion for this one?
Same, ma'am.
And a second?
Second.
All right, who would like to speak to this? Mr. White?
I'll give a shot and then ask the solicitor to correct me if I'm either wrong or leaving anything materially incomplete. And if it's okay with the board, can I address both at the same time since they're related?
Certainly. Let me just read the second one so the public knows what we're talking about. Item D is Resolution 2024-27 engaging Topology to provide expert planning analysis specific to the Hamilton Conditional Use Application. Can I have a motion for that? And a second?
Second.
Mr. White?
Thank you. These two items relate to the Hamilton Conditional Use Application. As the board is aware, outside counsel was retained to represent the township's interest in this matter. As part of that engagement, outside counsel had recommended or advised the need of expert analysis and testimony as it relates to both engineering and planning. Those are the two engagements here. 2024-26 with Robert E. Blue engages on expert engineering, while 2024-27 with Topology is expert planning analysis. The initial engagements were less than $7,500. However, given the ongoing element to this proceedings, it is likely that those engagements will exceed $7,500, which is the limit at which the township manager can authorize expenditure. So at this point, it's coming to the board for board approval in that those expenses are anticipated to exceed the $7,500 limit. And so that's the summary. If there's any other questions or --
I do have, so the reason I pulled this, or wanted it pulled when I looked at this was, I was kind of concerned, not concerned, that Topology Services is charging us $125 an hour for an intern? That seems excessive. And Robert Blue is charging us $65 an hour for office services. I think these are things that should be built already into their rates.
Yeah, so in talking with both of these folks and the council, our discussions were aimed at total cost of all of the elements. What they've provided us is obviously the full list of everyone in their office. I think the expert testimony in both cases are coming from the individuals identified. I'm not sure they're even going to use those folks, but I could certainly go back and address that issue.
Thank you.
So my question is just, so we've already engaged them to a degree during the hearings that are still going on. What is it exactly, I think, that they're going to continue working on in relation to things that we've heard now or something we're going to hear later? What's the scope of the, what's the purpose of the engagement? It's not clearly identified in the document.
Okay, let me address it. The engineering consultant will review the engineering plans, the testimony of the applicant's engineer, and if need be --
applicant's engineer, and if need be, and again, it depends on special counsel. And remember that you're the hearing board, so, you know, the approval, the financial approval has to come from this board. But there's a separation between special counsel, witnesses that he wants to call, but Robert Blue, civil engineer, you know, he will review the plans, he will make sure that they comply with the ordinances, he will raise some issues, this is what I'm guessing, because I'm not involved with this either, and testify if need be. Same will happen with an expert planner. Typically, you have special counsel who is representing the township's side, making sure that things are, the testimony is correct. There will be a planner testifying for the applicant, there will be a financial consultant testifying for the applicant. So the planner that's proposed to be retained here, you know, again, would review whatever reports, make sure they're based on real documentation, and provide testimony if special counsel deems it necessary.
So have they already done that service up to $7,500, and we're approving another $7,500? Or are we expanding the scope of the agreement up to $15,000?
So the, the amount of work they've done to this point is less than $7,500. If, if everything stopped right now, we'd be less than that amount. This is in front of you in anticipation of this continuing on, and then having to go back and analyze additional information that comes up in these future hearings.
Remember, you have a, you have a hearing this Thursday?
Right.
Fifteenth, and you have a hearing on March 7th? And there will probably be more hearings beyond that, so...
And that is the, that's mostly engineering that's going to be at those sessions, though. So I'm curious, I just, I don't know what they've already looked at, unless it's just the pre-submitted plans that have changed. I'm just trying to understand what they've already spent money doing.
I don't believe the planner has done much work on this. I know Mr. Blue has been, was it the last hearing when their engineer testified? Their engineer is, is coming back Thursday. I found that out today, just for the board's information. He, he will be back on Thursday. We thought he had a conflict. So, you know, Mr. Blue will be, you know, sitting through the hearings with special counsel, you know, and then, you know, providing information to special counsel. So he, I know, has been, has done some work on this. I don't know the extent. Again, you know, that's, there's a Chinese wall here between, you know, the board and...
I got my BOC hat on right now, right? So it's all good. I, I think my, my question is really, like, without an understanding of what they've already performed, it's hard to approve an additional spend, right? So I don't, I don't understand what they've already done. And so if there's, I, I know it's all in good faith, but at the end of the day, we don't have a clear representation of what's been spent to date, for what reason, and how can we understand what to anticipate going forward and make a decision on a, on a budget change?
That's fair enough. How about we table these two items, and we'll have the attorney come back at the next meeting, and he can give a full explanation as to what's happened up to date and what is anticipated going forward.
That's great. And I'd be fine with a submission in writing, too, if that's easier.
So I just, I just want to make a comment that I think that, you know, as we've been sitting through this hearing, we have counsel for the developer bringing a lot of expert witnesses. We've hired a special counsel who needs to have his own expert witnesses to be able to present a full case on the side representing the township. So, I mean, I think in these sorts of things, it's, it's hard to say what it's going to cost, but it's an important expert to have at his, to be available to answer the questions, because we've hired an attorney who is an expert in, you know, municipal law, and is perhaps not a civil engineer or a topology expert. So I would suggest that we don't table this, that, you know, you'd have put a cap on how much before we come back. For those who are listening, the manager has the authority to approve certain expenses from the township up to a $7,500 limit. So if we had ended the hearing where we, instead of moving it forward, we probably wouldn't have hit that limit. I think by doubling the limit where he, where we now can, can work in, I'm perfectly comfortable with this. I'd love to vote yes tonight and keep them working.
Yeah, just so, in case I wasn't clear enough earlier, we have not spent up to the $7,500 yet. Some work has started. I was just trying to get way out in front of this and didn't want to find us in a position, say, in between board meetings where they've hit their limit and we have to tell them to stop. I, I don't think in the next two weeks we'll get there, that, which is why, if we need to have this come back at another meeting...
No, I'm good. I'm good. I didn't want to end up in a situation where we're like, okay, well, another $7,500, right?
Yeah, they'll be able to continue to work, at least for another, at least through the next hearing.
Okay.
I think we've got that much time.
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. White.
Any other commissioner comment? Any public comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so I'm going to call a vote on this issue. All in favor on C and D both? Is it okay if I combine them?
Yes.
On C and D both? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right. We then have consent agenda items A, B, E, F, G, H, I, and J. Can I have a motion for those?
Second.
Second, thank you. Is there any commissioner comment on any of those? Any public comment? All right. I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous. All right. So we'll move on to the business agenda. First, I have the appointment of Sharifa Natali Bell and William Orr to the Parks and Recreation Board. Item B is the Arbor Day proclamation, which it just has to pull up here. Ah, I need a vote on the appointments. Thank you very much. Okay, can I have a motion on the Parks and Rec appointments of Sharifa Bell and William Orr?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Want to take comment?
Any comment on these appointments? Either public or commissioner? No? Thank you. Arbor Day proclamation, 2024. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed the Nebraska, to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture, that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in Radnor Township increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business arenas, areas, sorry, and beautify our community, and whereas Radnor Township holds Arbor Day and all of its Arbor efforts in the highest regard, as signified by the township's anticipated designation of Tree City USA in its 32nd year, this year of 2024. Therefore, the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26th, 2024, as Arbor Day in Radnor Township, and we commend this observance and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands year-round for the well-being of this and future generations. So proclaimed, I don't need to vote on that. Item C, Ordinance 2024-01, is the introduction of an ordinance of Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, revising Chapter 115 of the Radnor Township Code of Ordinances, comma, animals, and animals. Article 3, Dog, Control of Dogs and Cats, Section 115.7, Dogs at Large, and by revising Chapter 205, Parks and Recreation's Area, Article 1, Section 205-4, Restricted Activities as Recommended by the Parks and Recreation Board at their December 2023 meeting, per a motion of recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on Dogs at Skunk Hollow Park and Trails. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Tammy, want to start us? There she is. Start us out on this.
It was a long read. I figured I'd get a head start and get the presentation up. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Tammy Cohen, Director of Parks and Recreation, here to talk about this tonight on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Board. Thank you for that introduction. So just to, to outline briefly, the leash requirement that is being recommended as per this ordinance would apply to Saturdays and Sundays and township holidays as outlined by the township on an annual basis. Those are generally approved before the end of the year, every year. From noon, 12 o'clock PM, through dusk, which is the park closing. So I want to make sure that that's clear. The park hours are dawn to dusk, as outlined within our current codes. So this was an item that started on the Parks and Recreation Board's agenda in October of 2020, so it's something we've been discussing for three years. The agenda item itself started out as a Willow's Park Preserve concern about dogs at the Willow's Park in the mansion, and of course, on the trails in the whole park area. I know those two are used synonymously, the two park areas being the park, Willow's Park, as well as the Skunk Hollow Trails. So this had been a focused item that had a lot of discussion, and it was brought forward by one of our Parks Board members. So what I'm showing you right now is actually a snapshot of their presentation, not mine. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. So in October 2020, which we were still virtual at the time, this presentation was made by one of our members, based on a lot of observations, experiences, things that have been happening, particularly at the Willow's Park, and then observations out on the trails at the Skunk Hollow Park Trails. And it started to raise the question as to whether or not the current park codes relative to the, the observation of dogs was appropriate. So essentially, the, the problem that was outlined, while it did apply to the Willow's and Skunk Hollow, it did apply to Hartford as well. We know we had some feedback that goes back some years about Hartford, but we'll put that one on the shelf for now. In the presentation, the encounters were described as being charged by dogs, being jumped on by dogs, wet dogs, muddy dogs, paws coming up onto people's body and chests while walking at the park, being knocked over by dogs. And also, we had some concerns about the dogs actually running into the mansion at times when the door might have been left open for events. So we actually have some images and things like that that we had seen and, and learned about, and hence why the Willow's Park Preserve was involved in this conversation early on. So what that led to was, this particular Parks Board member did a heavy investigation and research into the township's code, the township's ordinance, as well as those of the local ordinances in the local townships, at the state level, the federal level, et cetera. And what they really, what they really noticed was that there really is a, there is a leash law that exists in most places. In fact, I think there were only two other municipalities local to us where there wasn't a leash, where there wasn't like a, like a set leash requirement 100%. So they found that, you know, something peculiar and something they wanted to continue looking at in more detail. So just to take a look a little bit more closely at the ordinance that we're talking about, the one that currently exists. So we have kind of two that references the public dogs within our public areas. So one is Dogs at Large, Section 115-7, and it talks about basically, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but dogs at large are defined, you know, at large when unaccompanied by an owner. A dog shall be deemed at large if unaccompanied by the owner and not on a leash. So at large, I know that they noted was a bit of an ambiguous definition in terms of the term, but where the conflict came in was relative to the park and recreation locations, where there was actually an exception that we had later understood through our, our solicitor, that essentially, this is sort of like a, like an exception to the general prohibition requiring dogs to be on leashes at large, whereas in the park areas, there was sort of a little bit more of a vague assessment, saying that pets may accompany their owners when under control, except in the areas specifically posted against pets. So as you can see, under control is sort of the definition that we've been living by with regards to our parks in terms of how the dogs are observed. Now, I've been here since 1999, so I can tell you it's definitely come with a lot of questions and a lot of confusion for many, many years, something that we, we get a lot of input about, and something that people have asked about, like, what does that mean? You know? And obviously, the definition of under control for someone might be different than someone else that might have a dog that, you know, is under a voice command versus another dog that would definitely have to be on a leash in order to keep the dog nearby. So basically, what this called for is a need to start to assess the public. So we started to put out a lot of different pieces of information and marketing to try and get feedback from members of the community to find out, okay, what's going on? What are the experiences that people are having? We want to hear more. We know that over the years, there have been several pieces of information that have come forward, and then also just trying to now, like, get people out to the meetings, come and join us, let's hear your feedback. That led to several meetings, we'll say, 30-plus meetings over the course of three years. So it's something they've been talking about a long time, even when we had designated meetings that had to do with Fenimore Woods and Oderisio Park planning, we still talked about dogs at the end of those meetings. So it's definitely a topic that has carried a lot of priority and a lot of discussion. We had many members of the public that joined us. Many of them are here tonight, and want to thank them for joining us, of course, and obviously, the Parks and Recreation Board for the time that they put into this. It's been a lot. So essentially, that brought us to tonight, you know, where we have this two-step process where we would potentially introduce this ordinance and then adopt it at another meeting, which would be identified on February 26th, if in fact it was to move forward. So essentially, this is the resolution recommendation that was forwarded along to the Parks and Recreation, I'm sorry, to the Board of Commissioners from the Parks and Recreation Board. This was in December. If we back up, though, for just one second, I do want to point out that there have been several, like, very focused meetings. They had one in April of 2023 where this room was standing room only. There was another one that happened actually in September. They didn't have a quorum, but they still held a meeting and held lots of discussion. So there was a lot of public input. In fact, I think the April meeting went for three hours. In September, they met again, they talked again, and then in October, the board really started to deliberate in terms of where their position was and where they were going with it. Because now being three years, this topic's been carried along, it's time to start to, you know, evaluate whether or not they're going to make a decision, make a recommendation, or just put it to bed. So they came back actually in December and refined a recommendation that they did make in October, which was a little more specific, which basically is what led us to the copy of the resolution, which I think is at the back of the room here for anybody who maybe didn't have a chance to get that, and I believe it's also included in the packet. So essentially, requiring all dogs on leash after noon, or 12 o'clock PM, on Saturdays and Sundays and holidays, so specifically township holidays within the township schedule, placing additional signage and infrastructure necessary to inform the public that the Willow's Park is dog-free, meaning no dogs permitted. That's something that hasn't changed in this conversation. That's been the case for a very long time. Again, you know, goes back many years, at least since I've been here in 99. And then any rules regarding dogs in Skunk Hollow Park with appropriate etiquette for having dogs in the park, which is very important. We know that that's been an overriding thing regardless, and that applies to a lot of our parks where the dogs are permitted, is really trying to come up with that etiquette plan. So, and then requiring the Parks and Recreation Board to revisit and reevaluate the recommendations. They had stated within two years... They had stated within two years, but I think what we decided is, let's do it within one year and take a closer look at it and evaluate how it's going. Understanding that if there are situations that come up that would arise, that would cause us to have to look at it earlier, if there's a situation in particular, some, you know, some situation that happens with regards to the parks, that, you know, we would do that earlier if needed. And then allowing the township to set usage restrictions necessary for dogs in Skunk Hollow Park for any pre-planned events and programs sponsored by the township, which we know we have plenty of those that, that go on. So topic communications, you know, been disseminated in so many different ways. I'm sure people have seen information posted at the park prior to a lot of the meetings. I know we had some event campaigns and educational discussions at an event that we had at Hartford Park in the, in the, just this past fall. Social media, website, so, and we've been able to build a really great list, a very solid list of folks who both supportive, or not supportive of this topic. That's allowed us to develop a really great rapport by collecting emails and sending them notifications. So all good information to have on the horizon. And then that's just a snapshot of, you know, some of the pictures of the boxes that we had up with information at the park. These are some of the dogs that I've gotten to know in the last few years. Folks love to send me pictures of their dogs, which is exciting and always great to see the dogs, the well-behaved dogs, of course, at the park. But heard from a lot of people, heard some great stuff, heard about the sense of community that they have out in the park, heard about, you know, their rapport they build with everyone that's out there, the mental health of their dogs, you know, being so positive, all of the benefits that we all know is out there on the trail system at this very special place that exists. So through this process, we, we were allowed to really take a closer look at our dogs, our parks where dogs are permitted and where they're not permitted. And as we see here, you know, we have, we have a lot of parks where we do permit dogs. We have a pretty, pretty good balance overall. But focusing and honing in over onto the Willow's and Skunk Hollow gave us an opportunity to also clarify, clarify a little bit about the Willow's. The Willow's Park proper, a lot of folks believe that dogs are permitted at the park. So this gave us an opportunity to kind of do a reset on that. I think the years that maybe the Willow's Mansion was closed, there was a thought that, you know, it was just sort of a, an open area where dogs could be. So it gave us a chance now that, like, the Willow's Park Preserve is back in operation. There's lots of events, there's lots of activities that are happening, to now sort of like go back and redefine that. So just to give just an overall view of that, so here's basically the boundaries of the Willow's, and the red boxes are just the parking areas that are adjacent to each of those sites. And then, of course, here's the Skunk Hollow area, and underneath that, you can see the trail system. So what you actually have is, over in the Willow's main parking lot, where it's the lot that's below the mansion, it's a shared lot. It's used for mansion events, it's used for the trail users. So there is a great deal of overlap that, that happens there naturally. But this gave us a chance to really remind people, and also for some people, it was a learning experience now to know that the Willow's Park does not permit dogs. And it's been a really important piece for us, just given the amount of events that are going on now in and around the mansion. Not only is the WPP holding events that are inside, but they have a lot of events that are outside also. So I just wanted to point out the signage that's there. I know we added this little plastic chain and fencing area with a sign there that says no dogs beyond this point, kind of directs everybody back to the Skunk Hollow Trails, which then takes them and dumps them back out into the parking lot, so kind of reroutes them around the mansion so that they're not trekking through that area. Because that's where we've seen and we've, we've learned of a lot of issues that have been occurring with dogs running into the mansion, running into events, dogs that'll be, you know, 50 yards, 100 yards ahead of their owner and just wander into the event that's there. Definitely something that we want to build on as time goes on and just continue to re-educate. The other part of this, too, has tied to cleaning up after your dogs. We've used this as a platform to keep that discussion moving as heartily as possible. I know I just had some feedback again today about excrement left along the little walking path that leads you up from the parking lot to the trails. I know I've visibly seen it there myself anytime I go over and update some of the signs, so it happens, it's something we want to remind folks of. They really have a strong responsibility there to clean up after their dogs. So this has served as, this whole discussion these last several years, I think, has really helped reinforce that. Some of the concurrent topics and related topics we talked about along the way, just to quickly summarize those is, you know, we recognize that, you know, there could be a possibility for leash requirements in the parking lots, building awareness for people who use the park that might not realize that dogs are there. All these etiquette pieces and usage pieces that we do want to increase signage, increase boundaries and fencing, and make sure that some of that stuff is more clear moving forward. We talked about the trail, the creek bed, the root erosion, all of that happening. Those aren't, I'm not saying it's a direct relationship to the dogs, but it's definitely a concern that we've had discussions on. And as a board, the Parks Board, you know, looking to address those, loss of tree coverage throughout the, the trail system has definitely been an impact as well. So as time gone, has gone on, obviously, we started with the original presentation back in October 2020, started to build a lot of feedback and information to kind of keep this on the radar as to why it's been an issue. And what we have seen is there has been a lot of feedback, there has been a lot of information that has come in, a lot of reports that, you know, like, each of our Parks Board members are stewards of the parks. So all of them really did a great job in the last couple of years of getting out to the trails, even though they have specific assignments of parks that they go to, and have reported back on some of the experiences that they have had, positive and negative. So just to point out some of that, I mean, the biggest trend right now in Parks and Recreation is that, you know, there's almost 50% of households now owning dogs. Dog parks are the biggest impact, impacting parks across our country. Those are things that we're hearing about and reading about, it's not just pickleball. So the nature of the reports, I know that this has been the elephant in the room, this has been a big question. What are the reports? What's the data? What does it mean? What does it say? We know that we have a lot of police incident reports that have been accumulated over the, over the last decade. We get call-ins to our department. I will say, in my 25 years, it's definitely, until pickleball, it has been the biggest, the biggest phone call topic. But as far as park complaint, it has been the biggest phone call that we have received. And some of these, I'm not going to read them all, but, you know, you can see here, small dog attacked by a large dog, concerns for children, I was charged and attacked by a dog, uncontrolled dog running 20 feet away from the owners. Some of the call-in reports, two dogs running from out of nowhere, knocked their three-year-old down and took his walking stick. These are all things and stories that we've heard and lived, you know, to understand what some of that has been. And I know a little bit more of a detailed report was put together for the board that we provided you in advance of this meeting, so you had some more of that detail. So where we go from here, obviously, the implementation, you know, as far as the ordinance would go, tonight would be introduction. We would most likely move to adoption on the 26th, if in fact it was introduced. And then start building community education and awareness, so folks understand, you know, what the, what the new rules would be, how they would be applied. Talk about use etiquette just in general, that's an overriding theme across all of the parks and something for all of our park areas like Hartford, like Friends of Radnor Trails Park, where dogs are permitted, making sure that, you know, there's a use etiquette and details that are there, signage, boundaries, things like that for folks to, to know and understand as they use the parks. I know we'll talk a little bit about self-enforcement, enforcement calls, and encouraging people to call 911 when situations do occur, as far as that goes. So this is just the, this is just the slide that I had up before of the actual resolution. And at this point, I think now we will start consideration and discussion.
Thank you so much. That was really well presented. I'm going to do this just a little bit differently. I'm going to get Commissioner comment and see if there's any staff comment, and then public participation, and then we'll probably have a little more deliberation with the Commissioners. So any initial Commissioner comment? Okay.
It's more of a question. So I'm looking at this, and this is just Skunk Hollow, right? But we saw a slide where dogs are able to go to other parks. So this ordinance wouldn't apply to those parks as well, only Skunk Hollow?
Only Skunk Hollow.
Okay. Thank you.
When, excuse me, when someone calls in to report an incident with a dog or something they saw, what kind of information is taken down? Is it their name, their address, and that sort of thing? Or is that just, it can be an anonymous report?
If someone wants to leave an anonymous report, they're more than welcome to. Most people do give their name, and they do give their address, and I have their phone number. I encourage them to also make the report to the police department so that it is a formal report, especially if it's something significant where there was, you know, a bite attack, anything like that, or just in general, even just so that the report goes on file.
So I noticed that, I think it was last year, it was a big jump in reports, about 18 incidences last year. Is that right?
It depends if you were looking at the police reports. I think that as a result of these conversations, people had been more encouraged to reach out, especially to the department. There've been a lot of emails, there've been a lot of phone calls, but we've solicited it. And they're definitely, I think there's definitely been more people reporting because I think they feel they have a platform. I think folks sometimes feel like they can't dial 911 to make a dog report. So continuing to reiterate that is, is always really important, because obviously, to be able to, you know, report an issue happening, folks have to call 911.
So has it been many different people, or is it sort of the same people calling all the time?
I think some people do make multiple reports of different incidences, but it, I've seen a lot of different people over the years.
Okay. Thanks.
And Tammy, maybe this is also a question for the chief, but when a report comes in and it, to the police, what is the response? I'm sure it's dependent on what the report is, but what are some typical responses to formal reports of dog issues, bites, you know, danger?
If a, if a call is generated through the township line or 911 call, Radnor Police are notified, we will send an officer to respond to that location, hopefully meet the complainant. Often, those complaints are from somebody who wanted to report something. There are sometimes anonymous reports, as Ms. Cohen had stated. However, if the Radnor Police respond, we will obtain all names, information, information on the animal, confirm if the dog is licensed, shots are valid, and then we will have our ordinance enforcement team under Supervisor Mike Marataia join us with the investigation. Depending on all the different factors, it's documented, if there's something wrong, charges could be filed. We usually, we confirm rabies records and other things and work with vets if it's a dog-on-dog incident. So they kind of have a wide range of things that occur, and we attempt to assist with those. However, a police incident is always generated, Commissioners, in anybody's name who provides us one, we will place that in the incident report. And then if we do have an incident that involves anything with any of our divisions here at the township, such as public works or parks, that copy and information will be sent to that director so they can, you know, forward it up. And, you know, we come across everything from a stop sign down in the street to a dog, a dog fight. So hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. And then Tammy, for you, one thing that you mentioned in your presentation was the, or I guess it's in the, it's in the proposed ordinance, is the township events. Does that include events at the Willow's that are not township-sponsored? Does that include private events, rentals at the Willow's?
Well, it does not, because, again, we're trying to re-educate and just continue to build the policy of no dogs permitted in the Willow's Park. So dogs aren't permitted in the Willow's Park, so they therefore...
But they get there.
They do.
They get there from the, from the trails.
They do, which is why we've tried to create signage to reroute them. Like, if you know where the garden, the top of the garden is, where the beehives are in that area, try to reroute them there with the chain and the, the posts that are there, to reroute them back onto the trail so that they can finish the rest of their journey. And most times, they're parked back, you know, back down at the parking lot, so we dump them back out at the parking lot, whereas some folks used to just cut through that area. And, you know, I'm working with the Executive Director at the WPP, that seems to be working. So that's a positive. So if there are ways to, you know, continue to increase signage or boundaries with, you know, nice tactful areas of fencing with signage and things like that on them, to continue to educate people, those are some extra strides that we want to try to continue making.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to follow on with Commissioner Agnew's question regarding the data. And I think she said there were 18 incidents reported in, in 2023. And just want to go through some of these. Now, of those 18, four were calls to the police, the rest were emails to the Parks Department. So we'll go in April of 2023, and this is the description that we are provided. It says, "Would feel more safe and use the trails if dogs were on leash." I mean, that's, that's a feeling. To me, it's not an incident. There, like, there was nothing, I don't have any, anything further to go on, like, what, you know, what happened? Go on to another report, "Don't feel safe and will find another location." Nothing, nothing even says a dog there. They just, like, what, what makes them not feel safe? Next report, Jeep shows up and all the dogs jump out. Were they put on leash after they got out? Like, I have no further information to go on with that report. Another one from May of 2023, "Please require leashes." No incident, that's just your feeling that leashes should be required. So, so most of these, I don't see incidents, I see people's personal feelings, which is fine. You know, we all have our personal feelings, but to me, what we're trying to do, it's a solution trying to find a problem. So, and then I do want to go on the four reports that were sent to the police. So of those four reports, we had an officer show up, were you able to see a dog off leash?
I don't have the exact reports printed up, I'd have to go pull them up for you.
Were any citations provided to any dog owners?
Again, I would have to go, the goal was just to put those incidents down, I can print them up and get back to you in a matter of minutes.
Okay. So, so right now, I'm, I'm failing to see a problem. You know, again, I got, I have people that don't like dogs off-leash or don't want dogs off-leash, but, but it's not marrying up with, with an issue or a problem in, in the parks. Second, second concern I have is, second concern I have is that we have, you know, the change is Fridays and Saturdays and holidays. Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. Most dog owners are walking their dogs Monday through Thursday as well. People are in the parks Monday through Thursday. So are we saying that there's, there's no problem on Monday through Thursday? You know, the same dog owners who are there on Saturday and Sunday and holidays take their dogs there every day. I mean, they are vigilant, vigilant and do it every day. A third, third issue would be enforcement. And Ian, can you go back to the slide that shows where we, the parks where dogs are not prohibited? So, I mean, this is a long list of, of parks. And I guarantee if you showed up at Beauconner, Dipmar, Anki, Odericio, Radnor Memorial, Philippone, any day of the week, any day on the weekend, you're going to have parents there watching their kids, most of them, or not most, but there would be at least a half dozen dogs in that park. When was the last time we cited a, a neighbor for having a dog in one of these parks? When was the last time we cited a, a neighbor for having a dog in one of these parks?
Commissioner, I would have to do a search of those. I can anecdotally state that there are times on some of the completely, the parks that don't allow them, where we will get a resident who will contact us stating somebody's in violation. Our main goal at the police department is to try and work out compliance without a citation. So we've had some run-ins. In particular, one that comes to mind recently is Cowan Park, where the subject kept using it, a family contacted us because they were exercising in a park. We were able to work through it without a citation. We were on the verge. But I would have to run each one of these parks for you and get that information, which can be done. I just need some time for that.
Yeah, I just, I just, I, I have a feeling, I just feel like, you know, if we were to implement this, you know, it'd be, it'd be really hard to enforce. One, but, you know, if you get a call into the police department, by the time you guys get there, get out of your vehicle, go into the park, that dog owner is either, he's departed, or he or she has departed the park, or they have that dog back on leash, which at that point, no citation can be given, and, you know, nothing's really done. Second point is, you know, we, we have these, we have these ordinances, no dogs in park, dogs are allowed in the park, no commercial activities in our parks, people run their businesses out of our parks, which are not enforced. So, so why are we adding more to the books when, when the ordinances we have on the books are currently not enforced?
Well, I think when, when we're made aware of something, we try to check it out.
I, I've made multiple, I, I've made multiple notifications of businesses being run out of Memorial Park.
You have, and, and each time we've known that they were there, we've sent someone from our department out. In fact, I've interfaced with Rick and his staff as well, and the park staff, who fall directly under Rick, that when they see folks out there running those businesses, that we would go address them. So, and we're also working on surveillance for that park to look at those things.
Any day from five to eight p.m., and there are, there are businesses being run, which takes away space from, from Radnor residents being able to enjoy that, that field.
Well, the Radnor residents that are permitted to be at that site are all notified that if they see businesses operated, to let us know. And they've never complained of losing their time.
I mean, my, my point is that there's, there's ordinances that are not being enforced, so I have concerns putting more on the books. So I, I would just have to see more and hear more. I mean, I have yet to, and, and Skunk Hollow is, is close to Ward Six. I've yet to have a resident call and, and say this is an issue that they want to see addressed.
So one thing I will just say is there, there's been a significant quality-of-life issue that we've heard from folks. And, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Board because they're not here to represent themselves tonight or this recommendation, but I will say over the years that there have been numerous calls of people that want to use the trails. They want to be out there with their children, but they don't feel safe. Or they see dogs that are off-leash and their children are not, they're not friendly to dogs, so they're just scared of it. So, and believe me, I don't want to play both sides of this, but I just want to speak to the facts of the information that we've received. So just like any other complaint or source of information, you know, we, we try to document that and we try to help people have a good experience in our parks. And we're very fortunate that we do have a lot of parks where they're permitted and where they're not. I understand with games and things like that, people bring their dogs. You know, we try to reiterate with Radnor Soccer Club, Radnor Little League, all of those organizations remind your folks not to bring dogs. But usually until it becomes a major disturbance, that's the only time it becomes an issue then that gets brought forward, either to our department or to the police department.
So I'm just gonna, do you want to go first?
I want to go.
Go.
I, I just want to say a couple of things because Commissioner Abel, what you're saying is the fact that we don't have a leash law in Radnor Township. We shouldn't try to enforce when we're asking for dogs on leash times? Or we won't be able to enforce? I'm not quite sure what your, your comment is, is.
Well, if, if you, if we were to implement this ordinance, I think it's, I think to enforce it would be very challenging.
So when you look across the country, the national parks, the national historic monuments, a hundred percent leash law. When you look at the Pennsylvania State Parks, a hundred percent leash law. We're actually putting a privilege out there that's allowing people to have their dogs in the green footprinted, paw-printed, sorry, parks, under control and off-leash. And I think it really is a privilege that's not offered in most parks, as Ms. Cohen said, even in our area. I know there's one in Lower Marion, there, there are a couple around, but there aren't many. I attended a lot of these Parks and Recs meetings, and I have to admit, it was dominated by people who came specifically because they wanted to keep the privilege of having their dogs off-leash. I, I hike a lot. I've been bitten by a dog on leash and off-leash. But I also heard from people at these meetings, not as many as there were people that wanted the privilege to continue, but that were clearly afraid of dogs, that clearly were worried about being knocked over, worried about muddy footprints on their clothes, on their kids, that their kids were scared of dogs. And I think that it's a rational plan, one, because Parks and Rec took days and days of meetings to put this together. But also because people at Parks and Rec use the term adult swim, that the park should be for everyone, and what we're saying is we have six to maybe eight or nine hours twice a week and on holidays that we're asking people to keep their dogs on leash. You can still walk your dog at Skunk Hollow, your dog just needs to be on a leash at those hours. I agree that enforcement of this will be a challenge. People seem to think that they can enforce good behavior and excrement pickup of their dogs while they're off-leash. Well, I think it could only improve with them on leash. I'll leave it there for right now.
The only thing I want to say is that Commissioner Abel and I are looking at a spreadsheet that was shared with us showing all complaints that either went to police or Parks and Rec. It's a, you know, fifty-plus, it goes back a lot of years. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's fifty-plus, but it does go back about twenty, uh, ten years, sorry. It's very small print. Anyway, so I was focusing on the more recent. You know, he pulled out some, you know, small, brief description that made it to a spreadsheet. He didn't, you know, these aren't conversations with Parks and Rec or the police. It's not looking at the reports and getting the full story. They just did a quick notation of the type of call they got. And he chose the ones that didn't say, "Police calls, incident, injury to dog's ear from another dog, dog charged their, their dog, dogs fighting, three dogs attacking one dog, dog charged his dog while this was happening, dog chased their dog, is off-leash, they had to shove the dog off." You know, so as many of the call-ins that just say, "I'm uncomfortable, it's my opinion, you shouldn't have your dog leashed," I just want to be clear that the litany of calls are because there was a problem. Most people don't call to say, the police, to say, "Thank you for letting me take my dog off-leash." So I just want to be clear, we do get calls, there are incidents in the parks. It does happen. And I also, my other issue with this is that Skunk Hollow is special. It's unlike any other parks area that we have. It's, you know, you're, it's in the woods, it's up hills, it's around logs, it's really sort of a natural space. So creating a space where there is a culture and a climate that keeps some people away because of their fear or their uncertainty about what will happen, I think is unfair to the broader community. So coming to compromise, I'm really very impressed with the, with what the Parks and Recreation Board did, the amount of time they put in it, the amount of people who came out and spoke to it. I am going to stop talking because I'd much rather hear you guys talk than, than myself. But I did just want to add that we're talking about a place that's very special and different. It's not a flat park, it's not, you know, a, a quick path around, it's not like the Radnor Trail. It really provides something that everybody in our community would love to take part in. So we have to figure out a way to share it, self-enforce, because, you know, it is difficult. Dog issues happen quickly and then they're over. So I think we'll come to, to something good for everyone, but I do just want to put it out there that, you know, this is, this is a real gem of our community, and those who don't have dogs and want to take a walk in that kind of environment should be allowed some space and time where they can be assured, a little bit more assured of their safety and their pleasant experience, so. And I am a dog owner. I leashed my dogs in Skunk Hollow last weekend. My dogs were much smaller than all of the off-leash dogs that were there. But we were mostly fine, very respectful approach, seeing me as carrying one dog because she can't make the whole hike, because she's blind and old. And then the other guy on a leash, I don't know him well enough. I adopted a ten-year-old dog, and I don't know if he would come back or stay close, so I didn't take that chance. But I wanted to see what the climate and culture was. It was Sunday afternoon, people had their dogs off-leash, mostly a lot of big dogs. And there was an incident, and nobody was hurt, but the shouting across the hills and vales of "Get your dogs", there were four or five large dogs that just went wild. They were running, they were completely, they were across the park from where their owners were. Their owners were yelling, people were yelling. I think neighbors up the hill were yelling, I think they were going in yards. And it was a total mess. But nobody was hurt, but it was a total mess. Those people, you had two individuals with a pack of five dogs, and they could not control them. So these things do happen. I wasn't injured, we had a nice day. I mean, I think there's a space for everyone. But, you know, I don't think we can say it doesn't happen. We have the reports, we have the anecdotal evidence, and, you know, some of us have witnessed it ourselves. But I lo, I had an old dog that was great off-leash, and I loved taking him there, and I did trust him, and I did have control over him. But, you know, I think owners and dogs are sometimes unpredictable. So anyway, that's what I wanted to say. Just hear what everybody else says.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And just for the record, I, I did mention the four reports that were called into the police department, and I asked the chief for further information. And that was told, I was told we would, we would receive that. So I wasn't ignoring the four incidents where police were called, I just have nothing further to go on.
Is there any further Commissioner comment? Commissioner Agnew?
I, I do. So, I, in discussions with you and with some neighbors and our constituents, it seems like people who train dogs bring their dogs there and kind of let them go. Is that your understanding? We sort of talked about that. And now this brings to mind, which, I'll admit, I didn't really know about, was not permitted to run a business. Wouldn't that sort of be running a business if you're a dog trainer and you're bringing your dogs to Skunk Hollow? Is there a way we can make sure that doesn't happen?
Yeah, if we hear from someone that that's happening, again, that's one of those areas where we do, we try to address that and get out to, to see what's going on and, and verify that. I mean, obviously, in the case of a, of a field, it's a little bit different. You know, we can work with somebody to get a permit, you know, and, and use an available space. However, in the situation where there are dog walkers and there are people who do, you know, they do have other people's dogs that they sit and they walk, we do try to address that verbally. I know if we have a, a situation, we try to get the police out there. Obviously, they're, they carry a little more weight than, than I do or one of my staff members do, but if we're in the parks, I know we try to address that.
Well, I wasn't thinking about dog walkers because that kind of implies they're under control. I mean, I thought we talked about this, that, you know, somebody who's just early training dogs, a lot of dogs, and they'll just let them run and train them to come back and stuff like that. I, I, that seems to me to not be a safe thing to be going on.
And it occurs. Again, unless we know about it, to be able to address it. And that maybe would tie back to the etiquette and the policies that we put out there, you know, and signage and information that we divulge. You know, once we make a decision on this or not make a decision on this, I know that's a goal of ours is to express more of that information, but again, it's going to tie back to somebody reporting it's happening and then someone going to the park physically to address it.
Are you, are you done? Is there any staff comment here? Any public comment?
Thank you. My name is Mark O'Neil, 683 Jefferson Road, Radnor Township resident since 1954. I've been sneaking into Skunk Hollow as a kid before it became township property. I admit, I'm terribly so bad. Anyway, I've been, I've been running dogs there off-leash. Now, on that list of permitted, how many of those are off-leash allowed?
Well, they all are because of the way our code is stated and just requiring control.
Well, there are signs, for example, Radnor Trail, that dogs have to be on leash.
It has an image of a dog on a leash, but it does not have any verbiage that states that the dog needs to be on leash.
It is known, and, and 2020 is a critical date because Skunk Hollow was Sleepy Hollow until after COVID hit, and it became a very popular park. And, and, which is great. There are incidents there. I see bike riders coming through scaring dogs. I see a lot of runners coming through scaring dogs. And the dogs do get jumpy on those incidents there, and I admit that. But are bikes allowed to go through those trails there because they're very narrow trails? Are runners in big groups allowed to go through there because, like the runners running on the street, dogs come after them? I'm saying this is a real gem, as pointed out, that Radnor Township has. And people and the dog owners there all know it and are very mindful of that and keep an eye on that. To put this restriction, the concern, in the discussion in the park crowd, which I go just about every day, is this is the first step. This is the first step where, okay, we're going to restrict these days here, and then we're going to review it in a year, and we're going to make some more restriction because someone, and there's no sign saying this is an off-leash park, didn't know it because they've just discovered this wonderful gem, and their kids are running around or whatever, and the dogs are jumping in, the water being dogs. So the concern is, you know, this is the first step. So I oppose it. Everybody's pretty good about monitoring the dogs and keeping an eye on their dogs there. And I think there should be signage that says, "This is an off-leash park, be aware." Skunk Hollow is an off-leash park. You're welcome to come in. And a lot of people just walk with their kids and their families and hike, but don't have dogs, and everybody understands that. Some people, especially since 2020, don't know this, until they get there first time and they're shocked that dogs are off-leash. So that may be an issue too about some of these incidents. So I just want to point that out. Thank you. But first of all, the, one last thing is, events like this posted well in advance on the, on October, that's great. People will know it as long as it's posted on the boards that a specific date that we know dogs allowed because they're an event. I don't think anybody would be opposed to that. This is October events. It's coming out right now. I don't have a problem with that, I'll just adjust accordingly. But other than that, I'm concerned this is going to get tightened up more and more and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
I know I already spoke. Burke Fitzpatrick, 402 Locust Road. And I just had some notes. One of the concerns I have in writing an ordinance is the use of terms. One of the terms that's used a lot in terms of, regarding dogs being off-leash is "at-large." So I did some research years ago because there was an incident on the Radnor Trail. "At-large" is a dog running on the street, without an owner, without a leash. The fear was that the dog would get hit by a car. So that's where, that's where the term "at-large" comes from. So when you talk about a dog "at-large" at Skunk Hollow, well, the owners there are walking with the dog, it might be a hundred feet away, two hundred feet away, or whatever it is, but they always come back to, and, and we have some dogs, not mine, that are hunters, that like to go out and chase the squirrels in the woods, off the trail. So be, I'm concerned that the, the use of the word "at-large" is being applied improperly when it comes to Skunk Hollow. It's really not meant for that. It's meant to keep dogs that are vicious and away from their owners, off the streets, so they're not a danger to cars or pedestrians on the street. The other thing, there were some notes. One, somebody mentioned the fact that somebody was afraid to get, they were going to get muddy by a dog. Well, what are they doing on a trail that's muddy? Anyway, they could fall and slip and get muddy. So if they're concerned about getting muddy, they shouldn't be on a trail, period, regardless of whether they're dogs. Again, somebody said it's a quality-of-life issue, we want to do this. You know, the national parks have a leash law. Well, national parks are millions of acres. They probably, and I don't know, probably have areas, twenty acres, where you can have your dog off the leash. I don't know that. I don't know that. Skunk Hollow, I can't say that I do. Again, I know somebody, I met him, who has a yellow lab, who complains. He carries, he takes his dog on a leash, who has complained several or more times about dogs attacking his dog. Well, I met him one day and I asked him, what do you mean attacked? And he came up and he bothered my dog. Is that an attack? Again, we got reports. The reports were, somebody called, there was an incident. What was the incident? Well, I felt uncomfortable. Again, it's not specific. There's not really any real issues. I had three dogs. I now have two. The one dog I had was a white German shepherd. I never brought her out to the trail. And I've been on the trail for nine years. I never brought her to the trail. Why? Because she bit somebody. She bit a jogger while I had her on a leash. Fortunately, there was no skin broken or anything like that, so there was no incident. I would never bring her out on the trail. So we can, we, I believe that we can police, we don't need all these ordinances, all these people worried about all this stuff. We can police ourselves. We know bad dogs, we know good dogs. We don't bring bad dogs out there. Bad dogs, there are not many, I haven't seen any bad dogs. Maybe one in nine years that I've been out there. So anyway, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Hi, Rebecca O'Neil, 683 Jefferson Road. I guess my concern is there needs to be better defined the resolution. For example, things like etiquette under control. We need to define under control. If there's no regulation, like it has to be one yard away from the owner or 10 yards, whatever, you know, within recall. Or, and you have to carry a leash with you. So if you do run into a problem, you can leash your dog and remove them. But I think all this needs to be defined better because then when you get a call at 911 or the police have to respond, what's the penalties for this? If it's more than one yard, then okay, you're going to get a citation and you have to pay a fine. Or, you know, if somebody's bitten, you're probably going to go to court. But unless there's specific things written down, like it has to be this, has to be. I don't think it's defined well enough to be voted on yet. And it's a wonderful park. It is a benefit of living in Radnor Township. That's why we love living here. There's so many great benefits in Radnor Township. But 99.9% of the people and dogs are friendly, get along well. Yes, they maybe go up and sniff a butt or something, you know, that's, dogs do that. But they're not aggressive and the owner can call them away, you know, easily. But as someone was talking about earlier, there's mental and physical benefits, not only for the dog, but for the humans. So you don't want to take that away. And also trees were mentioned. And it sounded like it was an accusation that people or dogs were ruining the trees there. It's storms. Every time we've gone with our dog, it's always after a storm that you see all the trees down. And some of the people that walk there actually help, you know, the township. I saw somebody there today putting rocks and gravel and sand on the path because it's all muddy. People cut the trees when it goes across the path. So I think there's a lot of positive here. We're looking at the negative, the 0.1% of the problems. And what are they really? Are they definable offenses that the police can take them to court for? You know, I don't think that's very clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, my name is Diana Pope. I live at 116 Windermere. I'm in apartment A2. I've lived here for about a year and a half. But I have gone to Skunk Hollow and enjoy it. I don't own a dog. I like dogs. I grew up with dogs. So my question is, we heard that there were at least a couple of communities, townships perhaps, somewhere in the region that do have ordinances related to leashes. So, and you've mentioned, you know, the national parks, state parks have, is there evidence that they work? So, you know, at one point they were enacted. So there has to be evidence of what it was like before and what it had, what happened after. So if, if there are ordinances that do exist in townships or communities nearby, it seems it would be easy to ask, what happened when you instituted your ordinance? Did it actually reduce problems?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Stephen Fletcher, 242 Highland Ave. I just wanted to point out that I was going to come up to say something very similar, which is I do happen to have a little bit of expertise on this, having studied animal rights law at the only law school that did it and having set up a couple of dog parks in both New York and Los Angeles. First thing would be leash laws were designed to assign liability. They had nothing to do with people's safety. It had to do with a whole bunch of lawsuits that were happening during a time period where legislation came into play because it allowed people to identify who was responsible. Because dogs are property. And like any other property, there's civil actions that we have at our disposal to recover for injuries, which still exist. But there have been a lot of ordinances and laws in various jurisdictions, as is pointed out, that have been put on the books. Whether or not they have been successful for their intent, that's hard to say. And I think that's what this debate here is showing. One, I would ask of the, right away of the township, and I appreciate it, is when was the last time Radnor Township cited anyone for having an unlicensed dog? Because all Delaware County dogs over the age of three months are required to be licensed with the county. It's a $300 fine. I wonder how many of those have been written? Because that seems like the type of ordinance that actually has some teeth to it. But we don't really use that either. At least I don't know anyone, I haven't heard of anyone. And probably some people listening are now are just learning about having to be registered with the county. But it's a requirement. So to Commissioner Abel's point, we have things on the books already, but they're not really enforced. And my public comment earlier is really distilled down to the fact that nothing was being enforced. There was no citations being written. So what's the purpose of adding another restriction if we're not going to be enforcing it? And just one other point, I have the right to speak to this, just like you all have the privilege to be elected by us. And there's a difference in the language. We're not privileged because we have the right to use these parks. We have the right to use them because that hasn't been constrained yet. Once it's constrained, then everything becomes more difficult. But more to the point of anything else, we're just going to add something to the books that will make a couple people happy, will make a whole lot of other people disgruntled and frustrated. And once again, Radnor will have another thing on the books that we're not clear and we're confused about how it's going to be enforced, by whom it's going to be enforced. And so what do we do? I'd ask that from everyone here, as we're going to keep adding things on. And I commend everyone at Parks and Rec for the hard work. I've gone to a lot of those meetings and heard the same frustrations. But words matter. Incidents need to be incidents. There needs to be facts and reportability. Safety is not improved by leashes. That's been proved through a lot of studies. You add leashes to areas where there are bikers, where there are runners, where there's differences in speed, you've now added a potential nuisance from people going by. Anybody who's run quickly or ridden a bike and a dog moves, you might see the leash. It gets in the way. You know what the most dangerous things on trails are? Children under the age of eight. They cause more damage than anyone. And anybody with kids knows this too. They're going out this way and that way. But we don't require leashes for kids. I'm not trying to make it that dogs are kids, but my point being is, what's the purpose of the ordinance? If the purpose is public safety, let's have some facts on public safety, which I've yet to really hear. I've heard anecdotes, and I think we've all acknowledged that. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Any commissioner comment?
Yeah, just to follow up on one of the comments from the neighbor speaking. I don't see any numbers or what's the penalty if this was to be enacted and enforced? First, first incident is a warning, second incident is some sort of monetary fine?
On the books now, the fines are anywhere from $300 to $1,000 set by the judge.
For a first incident?
Yes, sir.
Just one thing that's important to note is that this citation, if it went to the citation level, Commissioner, as the lieutenant pointed out, that's the value of the fine. However, the judge assigns that. The police department does not write the number on the citation. The judge will pick it and it'll be mailed out.
Any other commissioner comment?
I just have, just a couple of things. So I heard a couple of things that I just sort of want to comment on. I think there's a difference between dog parks and parks that allow dogs, and that's what we're talking about here. There are adjoining municipalities that identify dog parks. And in order to take advantage of that, you have to have a permit. Dog has to be licensed and proof of licensure and, you know, vaccinations and things like that so that you know the dog is, that some sort of safety, you know, established that at least they aren't carriers of disease. And, you know, you pay for it. You pay $25 a year as a resident, I believe, over in Lower Marion to use one of their dog parks. We don't, we don't do that. We have a really nice, big, beautiful dog park that is off-leash and very clearly it's a dog park. People don't really go there to do anything but dogs. So I just, you know, I just mark that that's different. Again, Skunk Hollow, you know, we have to share our resources. And I'm dog people, you know, I'm, I love going to Skunk Hollow with my dogs. I want it to remain. I also would say that I think that, you know, somebody mentioned the joy of having the dogs sort of run into the, into the woods chasing squirrels. And, you know, this is an issue that actually was raised at the Board of Health, that having dogs off-leash antagonizing our wildlife is not a positive for our community. You know, we cohabitate with those creatures in the woods and dogs can pose a, you know, a danger to our local wildlife, which I think we all treasure. And as for the enforcement, I'm troubled by this too. You know, what I'm hoping is that this, you know, small restriction, you know, limited to days and hours, not coming in and saying everybody has to be leashed, I don't want that either. But, you know, it's sort of our, our sharing commitment is to find some times where people can go enjoy that space without having an unleashed dog, not no dogs, just unleashed dog. The one issue I do have a little concern about that's not addressed in what's in front of us, and that is the events at the Willows. You know, we spent a lot of time asking the Willows Park Preserve to prove to us that they have the ability to sustain themselves. This is a nonprofit organization that is charged with renovating the house. The township owns the park. They leased that house and have committed to really making it a community space. And in order to do that, they have to raise money. And just one part of them raising money is to rent it out. Weddings, bar mitzvahs, you know, memorial services, conferences, meetings, those types of things. They're limited to only having 25 a year. I would suggest that during those times, if it's a day event and the park is open, that they should be added to the list of times that we would restrict off-leash dogs. Not restricting dogs, but off-leash dogs during major events at the Willows if they land between park hours. And, you know, I think that that is, again, us sharing the space. Another gem, we've got Skunk Hollow, we also have the Willows House. So, you know, people will stop renting that if they hear the gossip anecdotal. I'm not saying it's all factual, but if they hear that my wedding was ruined because a dog ran through, you know, you're going to get less people wanting to rent that space. And then I'll end with the transporting your dog from your car to the trail is in the Willows Park. And if we could do signage or some sort of education around that, that your dog doesn't get off-leash until the trail, not unloading from the car. I have dogs that, you know, if I go to Hartford and unload them from the car, they're, they're gone. That, you know, I don't have them in my control. But if I, you know, when I leave the car with my dog, I leash it until I know I'm at a space where everybody's going to be fine when that dog goes off-leash. So that would be a couple of tweaks that I would like to see is that we carve in daytime during park hour, Willows events that aren't township-related. And more signage, more education around where the off-leash part of the park starts. I know we reroute them inside to not go to the Willows, but that from the car to the trailhead, I think dogs should be leashed.
Are you proposing an amendment?
I would propose to amend it to just, I think the signage can be dealt with in the educational piece, but I would say that, that last line of the ordinance that says events that are sponsored by the township would be amended to say, and, and Willows events during park open hours.
Do I have a second for the amendment? I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Vote on it?
Vote on the amendment?
Yep. Can we vote on the amendment? All in favor?
I think I'm not really clear about how people at the park are, is there going to be a sign up or something like that? That, oh, there's a wedding here today. You can't bring your dog at that time?
Yeah, they do that for township park events already. There's signage. Right, Tammy? Can you talk about how you restrict it during events?
So usually what we'll do is we'll, we'll put flyers up in the park information boxes that we have that are submerged in the ground at the trailheads. So there's one obviously right at the main lot before you enter the trails that's still in the Willows. And then there's another one on down in Skunk Hollow. If you drive down in off of Darby Paley Road, there's another access there. We try to put an informational box there. We would have to have the discussion with the Willows Park Preserve to understand their schedule. Sometimes there's some shifts and turns last minute on that. But many of the weddings are identified, you know, pretty well in advance. But would we be, would we, would we do this for all of their, you're saying all of their daytime events? Because it would, it would exceed the 25. So they're limited to 25 weddings out of the course of a year.
Right. And some of those are at night, which would be park is closed and you're not supposed to have dogs there or people there during closed hours anyway. So I think the, I think it would be a minimum amount of events. Or I would refine it to say, you know, at the request of the Willows for a private event during park hours. So they would have to ask you so that you would have notice and they would ask and they could tell you the hours and you could determine if it was appropriate. So does that make sense? So it would be a daytime event of the Willows, but they would have to ask for the Parks Department to put signage of leash dogs only.
So you're amending your amendment?
Can I just, let me, let me jump in here for a minute? The, this should be an amendment of the ordinance, not of the resolution that the Park Board.
No, no, this is of the ordinance that we're introducing tonight.
Okay, but.
I would like the last line of that where it reads township events.
That's the resolution.
That's the resolution.
The ordinance, the ordinance right now, it's section two, it's an amendment to chapter 205, adds Skunk Hollow Park and Trails and then the hours that are in there. At the end of that paragraph, it also says, "The Board of Commissioners may reevaluate the foregoing requirement on an annual basis, may add additional requirements on other park lands owned by the township." So for a specific line item here for the Willows Park, this is where it would go. And then this would be.
Where do we have, where does Parks and Rec get permission to close for their daytime events? Like the Easter egg roll and things like that? I would imagine those would be times you don't want dogs off-leash running through the parks.
I think that's just established through, through policy. There's no separate ordinance or anything like that.
Exactly. And it's, it was one time, it was in October. We did a scavenger hunt and a trail walk with preschoolers. And several months or several weeks, I should say, in advance, in 2023, we had just posted signs in the sign box. And the image that the gentleman that's here tonight was referencing is the one we gave to everybody tonight for 2024 because we know that event's going to happen again. And it's a weekday. because we know that event's going to happen again. And it's a weekday event on the trail, like from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. So, we've, that's only been a one-time thing, and it's been a, just a interdepartment policy.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Well, it would make things very complicated and difficult for the park staff to keep track of what the Willows events are. And I think the majority of your events, I mean, we're only, we're talking about less than 10% of the time that the parks open, basically, well, I guess it's not open at night, so 20% of the time. That would be just the on-leash restriction. And most of those times are when the Willows has events anyway, afternoons, weekends. I mean, maybe not Friday nights, but after dusk, it would be true, so. Pardon me?
Yeah.
But they go there?
I think it's because of the shared parking lot, that there's the confusion.
I mean, the resolution is for the Parks Department to sign it and, you know, make it clear because it's already not permitted. Dogs aren't permitted in the Willows Park.
Okay. We have a motion for this, and we have a second. So, I'm going to call a vote unless there's any other comment. Commissioners? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Four to one? Motion passed, yeah. Okay, on to the next issues. Items D, E, and F, I'm going to quickly read off, and we need a motion to table those. So, D is the 60 West GP Conditional Use Decision, which is moving to the 226 Agenda. Can I have a motion to table?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. E is the Authorization to Draft an Ordinance Providing for the Revision to Section 280-53.17 of the Zoning Ordinance of Radnor Township, relating to special use areas within the Wayne Business Overlay District. May I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Nay. Okay, so four, one. Discussion and direction, item F, Discussion and Direction Regarding Outdoor Dining. May I have a motion to table?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, four, one. Okay, on to item G.
Can we just give an explanation why those were tabled now?
Yeah, we spoke to it in the beginning. Sorry, Commissioner Abel, you weren't here. We, they're not exactly all for the same reason. Items E and F were introduced by a Commissioner who is ill and was not able to be here tonight. D is related to that.
Yep, got it.
Okay. Okay. Item G, Resolution 2024-24, a resolution to enter a five-year lease agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for the purchase of Taser 10 tasers for the use by the Radnor Township Police Department for the fiscal year 2024. The cost will be $51,045.03. The funds for this purchase requisition will come from the 2024 capital budget. For the fiscal year 2024, the total cost will be $51,045.03. The funds for this purchase requisition will come from the, that's the same thing, sorry. May I have a motion?
I have a question.
Oh, well, we have to get a motion.
I'm sorry.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Could I get, I guess, Chief Lanigan? Are you going to start us off on this one? Oh, Lieutenant Pinto.
Yes, yes, ma'am. What we are doing is, right now, we are in a, an agreement with the same company for tasers that's running into its fifth and final year. We were offered the opportunity to forego our fifth year, to enter in a new agreement, getting new updated equipment, getting more included training supplies, extra batteries, all the things that we've discovered over the last four years that were deficient in our initial program. The other thing we are trying to do is we're trying to make sure that each officer will have an individual taser, as opposed to right now where we cycle the tasers through officers that are working. Our primary focus is to give them the officers that are on duty and patrol, the highway unit that's out there most of the days, and then those that are left to the officers working details or extra duty assignments like that. It does exist, the situation does occur with the number of tasers that we have now, that officers do go out on the street without a taser. At the direction of the chief, we decided that that was inappropriate and unacceptable. We wanted to correct that deficiency, and we feel this is a good opportunity to do that and make sure the tasers are available for all the officers regardless of what line of duty they're working, whether it's a regular shift or their overtime shift.
So, we don't actually purchase the laser, the tasers, sorry. We actually lease them. We don't purchase them. It's the language in there that was confusing.
I, and I would maybe defer to the council on that, ma'am, because I'm confused. I don't know, because the lasers that we have now, we're giving back them. So, as talking it through to myself, no, we will not own them. We are leasing them. We will give them back. Yes, that is correct. And the other thing I'd like to add is that the two-year mark, we will be given new ones, the newest technology, the ones that are out. Whether these are outdated or not, they'll be replaced with new ones at the two-year mark, and we will move on from there.
Is that sort of the lifespan, seven years?
I hope not, because the tasers we have now are the tasers we've had for over four years now. So, they, they've lasted us quite well. We are beginning to have battery problems. It's just a bonus to the agreement that we're getting that, as the technology improves, they're guaranteeing us that we will have the most up-to-date technology available.
So, it's really about a quarter of a million dollars is the whole thing, really, right? Yeah. And that's a reasonable price?
Yes, yes. Yes, it's almost dead on. If I look at a DS in front of me, the total for 60 months will be just right at the quarter of a million dollar mark.
And will it be a lease to own?
No.
Commissioners, one of the things that we experienced with our first-time taser purchase with the last series is that the body cameras and the tasers, anything with the electronics, they are locking down the software because they basically control everything. So, we have switched, we checked in with several local departments who are now using the lease option because we get new software and upgraded materials. If you recall the recent body camera purchase, whether we need it or not, we will receive new body cameras that will take the old ones back. This eliminates this sort of, all of a sudden, they say they won't update it, or they've closed out a product, and then we have a real issue where we can't replace items. So, these two, the body cameras and their tasers are switching to this philosophy of the leasing, and will continue to do so while they always make improvements to it electronically.
So, at the end of the five years, you'll return those tasers and presumably go into a new lease agreement? Got it. And if something happens to the tasers in the meantime, they get run over by a car, or I don't know what?
Yeah, they're fully guaranteed by the company. In fact, if, the exact number in there, there will actually be three extras that we'll keep in place to rotate it out until the ones come back.
And if we have to use, we, you have to use one, and it malfunctions or surges too much, whatever, are we indemnifying? Do we have an indemnification agreement?
Counsel, I apologize. I don't, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know whether that's in the purchase agreement or not.
Can we find out?
I will, yeah.
So, so we're, we're in the, we're going into the fifth of a five-year agreement. What would be the total cost for this year under the old agreement?
I can get that number for you. It would be considerably less because we would have considerably less tasers. But I will tell you that where we stand now, we would have to buy new batteries for all of them, and we'd have to buy new training cartridges as well, so.
Okay. And then, and then over the five years, can you just give me the, so it's $51,000 and change for this first year, what would be the follow-on years? Or just give me the second year. Like, does the price, is there a?
So, April 2025, we would owe $46,987.22.
And then each year, does it go down?
It does not. It goes slightly up to a maximum number of $52,854 in the final year of the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Is that because the agreement is longer this first year? Like, you're starting now, which is, I mean, it doesn't really make sense. We're asking you questions. You don't know the answer, sorry.
I have the agreement in front of me. I know there's a lot of, there's agreements that go with it. There's software packages that go with it. There's training things that go with it. I, I would speculate that the numbers at the end of the lease get higher because by that point, we will have new tasers. There will be a higher quality taser, therefore probably be a more expensive taser. I know this sole figure, the total amount, is locked in. It doesn't change. I guess it's just the way they're breaking it down. There was an opportunity for some savings to pay it all upfront. We felt that that would be a little too odorous to the township, and we didn't go that route.
I would ask some advice from Mr. Rice about Commissioner Agnew's point about liability and whether we should condition this agreement on.
Indemnification.
Indemnification, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I mean, normally on something like this, if the Board approves it, it's going to be subject to my review and approval of it, and that's something that, you know, I'll look at. I don't know whether this particular manufacturer has that in the document at this point. But it's, you know, it's got to get by legal review before the township would actually sign it. If there's an issue with it, we'll bring it back to the Board.
Excellent. Thank you. That answered my question. I was.
When, when do we have to renew this lease? Is there a drop-dead date or something?
The need to get this signed, right here, contract would start the March 1st of 2024.
So, a couple of weeks, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Any public participation? Okay, I'm going to call a vote then on the motion as worded, knowing that our legal department will take a look at this after it's passed. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Item H, Ordinance 2024-03, Introduction of an Ordinance of the Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Amending Chapter 270, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 270-11, Prohibited Turns at Intersection, By Prohibiting Left Turns From Ithaca Avenue To The Dockerty Hall Driveway On The Villanova Campus, I'm adding that. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Chief Lanigan, are you speaking to this?
Yes, Commissioner. Commissioners, Dockerty Drive is a service delivery and has now become a sort of a famous food drop-off area. Radnor Police Highway Patrol spends a lot of time at that intersection, especially directing traffic. We have observed many pedestrian and vehicle conflicts due to the large amount of traffic that gets a green arrow. They approach Dockerty Drive, which is a private piece of property, a two-way, a two-way driveway, and what happens is, is they stack up. If they can't make the left, the cars now back up into the intersection, and it creates, again, pedestrian safety issues and vehicle issues, and also congests an already very busy level of intersection. Highway Patrol brought this to our Staff Traffic Committee, and we also asked our traffic engineer from Gilmore and Associates, who has reviewed the Pennsylvania Vehicle Code 67, Chapter 212.111 and 212.111, and they support, the traffic engineer also supports this. So, we are requesting that this continue to move forward here in Radnor Township.
Thank you. Any Commissioner discussion? No? Any public comment? I know that I did speak with Villanova University about this, or to a representative from Villanova University, and they understand the reasoning. Their only concern is actually their service vehicles getting to Dockerty Hall, but have kind of worked on some solutions about going in, turning around, and getting back. So, that's, I'm happy about that. Chief?
Commissioner, thank you for pointing out. Villanova had a representative in attendance at the Staff Traffic Meeting, and we are going to post a delivery only, a truck delivery only sign underneath the no-left. That's, again, if it's approved by the Board. This would allow their service vehicles, and let's just say, food delivery truck to enter there. We do not want to introduce more traffic into our local neighborhoods from that particular perspective.
Yeah, you also have that low bridge that we did the no parking next to, right at the end of the road, so. All right. Any other Commissioner, I guess we already did that, and no public comment. I'm going to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. We have our final item, which is aye, Ordinance 2024-02, again, an introduction, amending Articles 2 and 3 of Chapter 260 relating to the mercantile and privilege, business privilege tax, excuse me, specifically the provisions regarding taxpayer responsibility for collection fees. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. As, exactly as you described, this ordinance is an introduction to amend certain articles of Chapter 260 of the, of the code regarding business tax and the pass-through costs for attorney fees, collection fees, and court costs. This has been done from time to time over the years, and this ordinance will simply update currently what's on the books to allow for the current fees imposed by the courts and attorney and collection fees to be borne by the taxpayer.
Thank you. Any Commissioner comment or questions?
Just one question, Mr. Tate. Would this have any retrospective effect on cases that are currently underway?
Forgive me. From the point of adoption, which in two weeks, we would be up for adoption, and then going forward, there would be the cost as of that date going forward. So, we would not go back and impose it on prior cost, just going, yeah, going forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, that concludes the business section of our meeting. Next, we have reports of Board Liaisons. Anyone have anything to add? Okay. Any new business? Old business?
I just have.
Oh, sorry.
One question, and it's really not new business. So, and Ricky's gone. Bill, question for you. Under the consent agenda, we approved $38,000 for tree removal. Walking around Ditmar Park last week, I noticed a number of trees have received the purple paint, which indicates they are likely to come down. Are those trees included in this, in this, in this grouping, or is that for a later date?
Yeah, so, the short answer is no. The trees, and we got a similar question from another Commissioner on another park. The Township Arboretum is in the process of going through all the parks and identifying trees. And identifying with the purple, a purple mark doesn't necessarily mean it's coming down. It may need pruning. It may need some sort of remediation. And then within that report, we get timelines, too. So, the hazardous trees, we'll have to move on those. The ones that say we're going to keep an eye on for the next couple of years, they'll be in the report and identified. And those that need pruning, then we'll get going on that. But specific to tonight, that was, those are trees that were already evaluated and needed to come down.
Thank you.
Any other new or old business? Any final public participation? Okay. Move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.